Okay, recording has started.
All right, I want to welcome everybody to our town hall. My name is Sean Douglas. I am the president of the Madison Local Schools Board of Education. I want to introduce my colleagues, my fellow board members. Michelle Hayes, our board vice president and immediate past president. Gene Sensi, Pastor Mike Hari and Brian Horvath. Want to briefly talk about the role of a school board. It's often the district operations and set policy. We are not employees of the district. We don't work there. We all have daytime jobs, forty hour week jobs. We live in Madison. We pay taxes here in Madison, just like you all. So if this levy were to pass that we're here to talk about, I'll be paying those taxes and so will all of my colleagues on the board. We unanimously voted to put a six point nine nine mil levy on the ballot for the May fourth election. We made that decision after a great deal of deliberation, a lot of debate and discussion. The purpose when they go to the ballot box or when they mail in their absentee ballot. The agenda we're going to follow tonight is the treasurer, Mike Baccarello is going to speak next. Then our assistant superintendent, David Bull, our superintendent Angela Smith. Our preschool director, Jovette Hiltonen. Both of our elementary principals, Bill Mayer and Shannon Kriegma will be talking. Our middle school principal, Tom Brady and our high school principal, Bill Fisher. We're going to take questions via the chat feature here on Zoom. So as you have questions, please type them into the chat. I'm going to be monitoring those. And I'll be writing them down. And then after our presentation, we're going to try to answer as many of those questions as we can. I may group some of them. Many times there's similar or same questions that multiple. We will add those questions that are common to our frequently asked questions link that is on our school district page. We're hoping to we don't want to keep everybody too long. So we're hoping that that will work. I want to address two things right now that I think are common misconceptions that are, I think, would be commonly asked questions. So we could just get those out of the way. Something I talked about at a board meeting a couple of weeks ago. Many people have heard that schools may be receiving stimulus money anywhere between a million to three million. We don't know the number. I want to make it clear, this is one time money. And this money that we might receive is money that we have to use on very specific things that are built into the law that is passing that passed for the stimulus fund. So I'm just going to very briefly go through those because I've done it once before and that video has been posted on social media, but I want to cover it briefly. One of the things that the stimulus money can be used for and has to be used for twenty percent of this has to be used for learning loss. So this means that we have to implement programs to bridge the gap for students who have had learning loss as a result of the pandemic. Obviously, that's not something we did pre pandemic and that's not something we're going to do in the future. So that money that we get will be one time money that we have to use for a very specific thing that will not help us balance our budget. We can also buy personal protective equipment. Obviously, we didn't need that before the pandemic. We can do facility upgrades, specifically things like ventilation systems and plastic dividers between desks. Again, something we didn't need prior to the pandemic. And we lastly, we can offer after school activities and summer learning programs, and those are things we don't currently provide. So I just want to make it clear that even if we have an influx of dollars from the federal government as a result of the stimulus money, that will not help us balance our budget. Our budget is still there that we still have to provide all the same services that we do regularly. Second thing is there's been a false rumor going around that we're building a new high school. We're not building a new high school. There's been absolutely no discussion amongst the board superintendent or treasurer on building a new high school. That would be nice, but that's not something that we've been even talking about. And this is an operating levy that we have on the ballot. And an operating levy cannot be used to build buildings. So I just wanted to try to dispel that. And so when I will move on and I'll turn it over to our treasurer, Mike Baccarello.
All right, thank you, Sean. So I'm going to share my PowerPoint presentation. Let's hope all this works. Okay, can y'all see that?
Yes.
All right. So the purpose of my presentation tonight is just to talk a little bit about the history of the revenue and expenses. Our areas of expense reduction. We've had some questions about the revenue expense changes due to the pandemic shutdown. And then we finally I'll compare us to other districts. So the first graph is just showing a revenue expenses from fiscal year 2008 to fiscal year 2020. Briefly, a fiscal year starts July first and ends June thirtieth. So the fiscal year 2008 started July first, 2007 and ended June thirtieth, 2008. That's just the way we keep the books as required by a school district. So in fiscal year 2008, the revenue was twenty nine point five million dollars. She is all the way over here to the right, the the green line revenues green and expenses were twenty eight point nine million. In fiscal year 2020, the year that we just completed last calendar year, June thirtieth, 2020. The revenue was twenty seven point two million and the expenses were twenty seven point six. So in twelve years, both the revenue and expenses were lower than they were in in 2008. And keep in mind, when we talk about our revenue, we passed the levy in 2017 that generated an additional one point seven million dollars per year. And a revenue still decreased. So the the next slide is, you know, showing where a majority of that decrease came from. Our annual funding from the state has decreased by about two million dollars annually from 2007. If you can see, the 2007 number is fourteen point two million dollars and the 2020 number is twelve point two million dollars. So two million dollars a year we've lost in state revenue. Now, the last three levies that we had for operations. For this one away was the nineteen eighty nine emergency levy, which was approved and renewed every five years since since nineteen eighty nine. Approved that four point nine mills. That's the voted village and it's now collecting at one point seven five mills. That's the effective village. And I'll explain the difference between those two in a second. The joint financing district, which is a levy between us, Pansyl City, Perry and Riverside local schools. Originally voted on in approved in nineteen ninety renewed every five years. By the way, it, you know, I'm going to move on. Proved at four point nine mills. It's now collecting at two point two seven. And then finally, the levy that was passed in 2017 voted on at four point nine nine mills, not collecting at four point six two. So the the question is, what's the difference between the voted village and the effective village? The voted village is what shows up on the ballot. The effective village is the village that is needed to collect the dollar amount that was originally improved in either nineteen eighty nine, nineteen ninety or 2017. So as property values increase, the village is decreased. The school district does not recognize any more revenue. And that causes the following problem. As inflation affects our expenses, there's no inflationary adjustment in the revenue. So this is the nineteen eighty nine levy. So in nineteen eighty nine, you could purchase about seven hundred thousand dollars worth of goods with seven hundred thousand dollars. To buy the same amount of goods, it now takes over one point four million dollars. So let's look at that just on a levy that was passed in 2017, first collected in 2018. Two thousand eighteen, you could buy one point seven million. Right now it would cost one point eight million for the same goods or services because of inflation. But again, our revenue for both are flatlined. So let's just think about this quickly another way. What we could buy for seven hundred thousand in nineteen eighty nine, we could only buy three hundred and twenty six thousand dollars worth of that product last year. And the same for the 2017 levy. Well, we could buy for one point seven this year, or I'm sorry, in 2018, we could only buy one point six million. That is, that's four years and we've lost, you know, almost a hundred thousand dollars of purchasing power. So the next question we get is what have we done to balance our budget? So first, you know, what have we done over the last eleven years? And we cut eighty nine staff members. Roger Gowdy had a great line. Those staff members were doing something and now that's something isn't isn't being done. We've had no base salary increases in five of the last eleven years. The other years they were small increases. So the average over those eleven years was a little less than nine tenths of a percent while inflation was almost one point seven. So wages on the base aren't keeping up with inflation. And the employees contributions for health insurance has increased in those eleven years. What else have we done? We have better control over our healthcare costs because we're part of an eleven member healthcare consortium. By grouping our insurance buying power and grouping the administrative costs that go with it. We are able to provide insurance that has recognized lower than market increases during the shutdown. Because we weren't being provided transportation services. We were able to negotiate a quarter of a million dollar reduction in the cost of that contract for last year. Basically, we just didn't have to pay the quarter of a million. And Angela was able to talk to the busing company and said, look, we need more relief. We got another seventy five thousand dollars reduction in that contract cost for this current year that we're in. And then we also pull our resources. We share a nutrition services director with other districts. So it saves us the cost of a full time nutrition service director, nutrition services director. And we also share technology with about eight other districts all sharing the cost. And that allows us to provide technology in the Madison schools at well below market market price. So what has that done for our district? The effect of this? So our expenses are lower in 2008, thirteen years ago. You know, we're lower today than they were thirteen years ago. Again, twenty eight point nine million and twenty two thousand and eight, twenty seven point six million in 2020. So not are we not even keeping up with inflation, inflation. Our expenses are going down. How have we done that? Yeah, we've the staff cuts in the last eleven years. How do they affect kids? I'm going to let Angela talk about that. You know, that that's her area of expertise. So the other thing that is out there that I think we need to address is the change in the five year forecast. This is the forecast that was approved by the board in fall of 2020. We actually, this this shows, I'm sorry, this shows the forecast that was approved by the board right after the passage of the 2017 levy. You know, the yellow line. The yellow line shows what was projected. The blue line shows what was actual. So in in the forecast, we expected the ending balance this year to be about fifty five thousand dollars. The forecast produced and approved by the Board of Education in the fall of 2020. Which again was prior to the second round of stimulus because in in September, we had no idea it was coming. We had a projected ending balance of forty three thousand. So what we said we would do in 2017, we did. We made it to the end of 2021 with a positive balance. Now bring in the second round of stimulus money, which is a one time infusion of money that some of which will be used to offset general fund expenses. So this is what happens after that. And it is reflected in a in the forecast that was revised and approved by the board in February. In my twenty five years, I don't believe I've ever revised a forecast in February. But also I've never had so many things change in a one month period as happened in in January of 2021. The next item to talk about is the revenue and expense changes due to the pandemic shutdown. So revenue went a little crazy in in May of 2020. The second of the last month fiscal year 2020, the state reduced us by five hundred and ten thousand. So we did not have a whole year to react to that. We had two months. They took it in May and June. And then, oops, that should be FY twenty twenty one right here. We went into twenty one with the same cut that they started out with. And in February of this year, the state restored two hundred and seventy five thousand dollars of that cut. So our funding was reduced net five hundred and ten thousand last year and a two hundred and thirty five thousand dollars this year. Our casino revenue is down because nobody could go to the casino and unlike the lottery, as the casino revenue fluctuates up and down, it actually impacts our bottom line. During the first half of calendar year 2020, the Bureau of Workers' Comp gave an additional workers compensation premium refund. That one we didn't know about. We had budgeted for for the previous one. So basically, in in big numbers, the changes in revenue because of the pandemic, we've lost a little over seven hundred thousand dollars. So so what did we do to to combat that? Talked about the CBS contract reduction of of a quarter of a million. Our special ed because the, you know, schools were shut down and things were going remote. We were able to save fifty five grand on special ed transportation. And because we had no sports, we saved about thirty six grand on field trips, sports and educational field trips. All that is combined. Other reductions in operating expenses, you know, if if your teacher remote, the substitutes, you just don't have as many, no buses on the road, the fuel is less. Buildings aren't open, school resource officers aren't needed. And we just, you know, saved in copying costs because there was nobody here to run copies. So those are all reductions in in expenses. And then in April, we were given a small allocation of cares money and all of that did go to offset general fund expenses, the entire three hundred and fifty five thousand dollars. And then the other additional expense we had was our nutrition service program, which normally operates at break even. You just couldn't do that with with the the food that we were serving and the complete reimbursement, we weren't gaining as much revenue as and kids just weren't picking up food as we would during a normal school year. So we lost about seventy eight grand for that. So the net reduction in expenses was four hundred thousand dollars. So finally, I just want to talk about how we compare to other districts. Madison, we're blue. Go blue. Madison continues to be the lowest funded district in Lake County. We're all the way to the right. We are thirty six hundred and thirty one dollars per pupil below the state average, which is red. And over a thousand dollars less than the next lowest in Lake County, which is Riverside at twelve thousand. And our similar districts are a little above that at twelve thousand two. What's that put us? Thirty ninth lowest in Ohio in in revenue per pupil. Out of six hundred and eight school districts in Ohio, only thirty eight received less money per pupil than Madison. And then we hear, well, we're comparing ourselves to the rich districts in Lake County. So I did. Lake Jogga and Ashtria counties were second lowest in revenue per pupil. Only Jefferson in this three county area is lower than us. Moving to the expense side, we're lowest. We've been lowest forever. About five hundred lower than the the next lowest district, which again is Riverside and twenty three hundred lower than the state average, which is the red. And about five hundred lower than similar districts. That's the yellow one. What's that mean? We're seventy ninth lowest in Ohio in expenditures per pupil. So out of six hundred and eight school districts in Ohio, only seven hundred or seventy eight. It's been less per pupil than Madison. And again, three county area, we're third lowest. So one more slide, you know, occasionally here, we spend too much on administration. Everybody says everybody spends too much on administration. Well, again, we're we're lowest in Lake County. Fourteen hundred nineteen dollars per pupil, similar districts is about nineteen dollars higher than that. State averages couple hundred higher than that. But again, lowest in Lake County. I did not do that one on a on a three county basis. And then the last few slides, effective tax rates. And again, I explained the difference between effective tax rates and voted rates. We are second lowest in the county, and this is just operational levies. This is Madison's operational levies plus the joint financing district. So we're second lowest there. And then when you bring in the other levies that we have, again, just school district, not any libraries or anything like that. We are second lowest again. Brings in the permanent improvement levy, the bond issue and the capital maintenance levy. So second lowest in in Lake County. And then finally, people think that all the real estate tax that you pay goes towards the schools. When in fact, less than half goes to the schools. So in Madison Village, forty seven point three goes to the schools. And again, that includes the joint financing district. So Madison Village is forty seven point three. The township is forty four point four. Why is there a difference? Because the village is able to fund their operations through the one percent income tax. And the income tax doesn't show up on this list. So we're a bigger piece or we're the, we have the same dollar amounts in a smaller piece of pie. So our percentage is a little higher than it is in the township because the township has to pass a real estate tax to fund their operations. So that's what I have this evening.
Mike, could you talk a little bit about the issue? I keep seeing this on social media where people are saying we, people keep posting, we have the highest tax rate and then we're saying we have the lowest tax rate. And I think they confuse when when we talk about tax rate, we're talking about the schools tax. We're not talking about the community because so many other entities collect taxes on property, including the Adams Board, Child Protective Services, Metro Parks. I mean, the list goes on and on. If you look at your tax bill, there's many, many people or not people, organizations collecting that. So I hope you could address that a little bit because that issue keeps coming up.
Yes, I I don't know. You know, I've never looked at how Madison compares to other counties outside of school taxes. Because we're only able to control the school tax. But if if you look at at this, and I hope it's big enough so I don't have to do the the whole thing. You know, you've got, you've got village township, even in the village, you've got Lakeland Community College, you have the fire district, you have the metro parks, you have Auburn Career Center, which none of that money comes to us. They have a mill and a half levy that goes directly to them. You have the county for their services. You have the library, which is the Madison Public Library. And then special assessment, which might be MRDD Metro Parks and and those types. Oh, no, wait, Metro Parks is right here. So the only thing I ever talk about is this piece of the pie because that's all we can control. We have zero control over over fifty percent of your of the tax bill.
I just wanted to make it clear there. There are two separate conversations. One is the overall tax rate for Madison with all of the entities combined. And one is the school district. As you said, all we can deal with is the school district and and we have the second lowest in Lake County and that's is it second lowest, right? Like?
Yes.
And that's only because Perry Nuclear Power Plant is in Perry. So they don't have to turn to their citizens and ask them to pass property tax levies because they have such significant revenue from the nuclear plant. Which good for them, but we don't have it. And another thing I saw online recently was that we get money from the Perry Nuclear Power Plant. That, you know, the the recalculation of the joint financing districts levy that's thirty years old that we collect on means that we get absolutely no money from the Perry Nuclear Power Plant. Is that correct?
That's correct. We changed the formula to basically get out what you put in. Meaning your your relative tax base to the overall joint financing district is the distribution that you get. So we no longer are getting the benefit from the Perry plant. If you look at Perry local schools, they're getting sixteen thousand per pupil. I don't know whether they get all that much from the state. So that most of that is local tax revenue. You know, they've they've got a sixty million dollar power plant sitting in their district and our entire tax base is less than four hundred million. So.
All right, thank you. Up next is our assistant superintendent, David Bull.
Dave, you should be able to unmute.
Got it. Thank you. Good evening. My name's Dave Bull and I'm the assistant superintendent for the Madison Schools. I know we have several speakers this evening, so I'm going to keep my comments pretty brief tonight. In July of 2015, I came to Madison from another local school district of about the same size and very quickly noticed two things. The first is that this district operates on an extremely limited budget. All of the tight belt tightening that Mike has talked about over the years has had a noticeable effect on how things are done here. My my prior experience in my prior district, it was not a wealthy district. But the financial differences really stand out here. So a couple of examples, one of my roles here is to oversee our bus fleet. When I got here, we were really struggling to keep our aging fleet of buses on the roads. In fact, I've I've sometimes heard people call our buses Partridge Family buses because of the different shades of yellow, yellow paint on them. We've been able to slowly make improvements to our bus fleet over the past six years by a combination of purchasing new buses and used buses from other districts. So one example of that in 2016, we purchased two used buses from another local district for an extremely low price of two thousand four hundred dollars apiece. Those buses have been extremely reliable and they've been safely transporting kids in Madison since then. So I think we're at about going on, well, we're at five years now of use of buses at twenty four hundred apiece. So you know, where other districts might trade in older school buses for new ones. We make use of the the ones that we have and, you know, even acquire other buses that still have life left in them. And we use them for the life of the vehicle. The second thing that I noticed immediately is that the employees in the Madison schools are going to do whatever it takes to try to overcome this lack of funds. I see teachers using old textbooks. We recently found out that there's a set of textbooks being used that are in year nineteen for their use at the high school. They scrounge up resources online. They meet during their lunches to share ideas about instruction, collaborate on resources. You know, so they they go above and beyond. Our Madison bus mechanics will perform major repairs on buses that other districts would send out for repairs or maybe even trade in the bus. So while other districts have had one to one technology devices for years. Until the recent need for remote instruction this past year, our Madison teachers have used shared carts of computers, checking them out for specific class periods. But like this community, our staff will roll up their sleeves and do what they need to help kids. Other districts around us do have financial ups and downs. But in Madison, we struggle with a consistently low stream of funding. As Mike has already mentioned, we have some of the lowest funding per pupil in the state of Ohio. The systematic reduction of spending for staff and resources over the years has really brought us to a bare bones state. In the past, when levies have been defeated, the district has done what was needed to get by. But we're at a point now where additional cuts to our district is going to have a devastating impact. It's going to deprive our students of the tools, the experiences, the opportunities they're going to need to be prepared for the world that's in front of them. Having been here for six years now, I know firsthand that Madison has done a lot to keep costs down to effectively manage the funds that we have and even bring in some new monies with grant opportunities. I know that everyone's been impacted by the events of the past year. And I also know that our Board of Education and our superintendent do not ask for funding until it's an absolutely dire situation. The Madison schools have a very rich history of providing excellent education. And that's why I wanted to come here. So my message, I guess, as I depart here is I hope that you'll go out and vote on May fourth. And thank you for your time.
Thank you, Dave. I'd like to thank the entire administrative team for being here tonight. Not everybody is going to speak, but each building principal will be able to introduce their team that's here with them. I and our team here tonight is obviously our treasurer, Mike Baccarello, Dave Bull, the assistant superintendent and Jen Cantonese Grimes, our director of pupil services. So I thank everybody for their efforts this evening and being here to talk about our schools. So I thank everybody for their efforts this evening and being here to talk about our schools. Mike's laid out the numbers. David has told you how surprised he's been by the age and lack of resources that we've had in this district. So the challenges that this district has faced, and I've been in the district in various administrative roles for over twenty years. This is my sixth year as superintendent. They've been immense the entire time I've been here. This past year obviously has provided many, many unique situations that have stretched all of us. The financial realities of this district did not fade away because of the pandemic. It just became a little bit more complicated. We do not have a spending problem in this district. We have a revenue problem. And schools are told to run like a business, but they are truly not in total control of their spending and or revenue. There are unfunded mandates that we must do. Testing is one. Changing requirements on what we must teach. Various plans and requirements to meet the diverse needs of all students. Safety requirements are just to mention a few. We live and die by the state biennial budget process with a funding model that has been deemed unconstitutional since nineteen ninety four. The state cut our budget, as Mike said, last fiscal year and this year. And we still have no idea where fiscal year twenty-two and twenty-three will be. Where we'll be, because that process began in January, it's in the House now. It'll go to the Senate, it'll go to conference and we might have a budget by June thirtieth, but the last time we didn't have one until July seventeenth. So we cannot rely on the state to solve our problem. We have been asked why we cannot just cut salaries. Our staff has worked with us, as Mike said, over the past eleven years, they've taken a zero percent on the base five times in the last eleven years. All will continually be asked to do more with less. They took a step freeze before Mike got here and that was never given back. So our staff does do a lot with little. We've been asked what we're going to do to balance our budget. Well, last year in February, we eliminated numerous positions. Four high school staff members, teachers, a gifted teacher at the middle school and an elementary teacher. We also did not replace a special ed teacher this year that, who had retired at the end of September. We eliminated an administrative position and asked an administrator to take on extra responsibilities. Acting both as pre-K director and assistant principal at the elementary school on top of doing some grant work as a literacy coordinator. We eliminated a secretarial position at the high school. And we did all of these things in anticipation of a deficit pre-pandemic. Over my twenty years plus in this district, we've done this several times, losing quality people and programs along the way. Which impact all our students. When I started at Madison High School in two thousand two as an assistant principal, we had three family consumer science teachers. Now have one. We had two art teachers, we now have one. We have one, we had one business teacher, we never replaced that individual. We had a librarian who also had her own secretary part-time, neither of those positions ever came back. We had three industrial technology teachers, we now have one. We offered at one time French, German, Spanish and Russian in this district. We currently just have Spanish with two teachers. At the middle school, we had twelve language arts teachers who taught in eighty-minute blocks, three, three sections a day. We now have six teachers teaching six forty-eight minutes of language arts a day. We had twenty-three custodians in this district. Today, we have thirteen cleaning these buildings and keeping our kids safe during a pandemic. We had five maintenance men and a supervisor. Today, we have two maintenance men and a supervisor. All of these members, staff members have been working doubly hard in this pandemic. Our class sizes at the elementary level are nearly at maximum class size in a normal year. This year, we have had to do some with the pandemic, some long-term subs to sort of bring it down for the ratios to keep kids safe and distance. But on an average year, we're at twenty-five K to two, twenty-six. Three to five, and oftentimes we go over to the maximum. This year, we have several teachers who will be leaving the district at the end of the year. And three of those positions will not be replaced at this time, which is again asking our staff to make decisions on what we're able to offer our students. Every expenditure every day is reviewed by Mike and me. We, we look at those requisitions, we ask questions of, is this absolutely necessary? And how will it impact the education of our students? In addition to reductions, we have raised class fees and paid a participate fees this school year. And despite it all, our staff continues to provide a quality education for the ever-changing demographics of our community. With the dwindling resources that we have had. At this time, I'm going to turn it over to our building administrators. Who will share about their buildings and the work that they do. First up is Jovette Hilton, who I said is our preschool director. North Elementary School Assistant Principal and a literacy coordinator at North Elementary School.
Good evening, thanks. This is Smith and members of the board and the community for this opportunity. Now preschool's an exciting time, from birth to age five, a child's brain develops more rapidly than, than at any other time in life. And research shows a child's experiences in their early years, positive or negative, nurturing or neglected. Directly affect how the brain develops with long-term impact on the child's health. And the ability to learn and succeed in school and life. Preschool helps us learn many skills before the age of five, arguably the most important years of our lives. I'm pleased to share a peek into our very own Madison pre-K, a five-star program. I asked our secretary, what kinds of questions do you get from parents and people looking to enroll in their kids in our program? She said that a lot of times they want to know about our teachers, are they real teachers? And so all of our teachers have teaching licenses, all of our assistants have a minimum of thirty. Early childhood step up to quality hours every two years. We offer a grant program to our children, families that cannot afford a regular preschool. And we have thirty-two openings every year in that program. We have classes morning, afternoon for two and a half hours a day. Students can attend either four or five days a week. And every classroom has at least one teacher and one assistant. This is a low ratio for our classrooms with special needs students. And we make it work, but it's a difficult ratio for our kids. Every class also sends home books for all students, our curriculum is the same. Whether you're a special ed student or a typical student in our program. And a day in the life of a preschool child kind of looks like this. At drought, I drop off, the teachers greet the students and they send them in. The assistants help them get ready for the day and many will use the bathroom. After all the students have arrived, the teachers return to the room and lessons begin. Every day we have gross motor, I would say that's probably the most exciting time. Yeah, will it be outside on the swings and play equipment or maybe in the gross motor room? Which sometimes is a little gross because we need to clean it every day. Shopping in the market or riding bikes or playing ball. Or maybe if we're really lucky, the teachers have set up a new obstacle course in the big gym and the kids can play with the parachute. Or ride bikes and scooters. Sometimes we go out on the basketball court and ride bikes and scooters. And this year, the children built snowmen outside, it was amazing how long they stayed out to build their snowmen. We do have a courtyard to do discovery play. And this year, we have a Madison Girl Scout. Who will be making a sensory path for our students in the courtroom, we're very lucky to have so many volunteers that try to help us. To keep those things going. Discovery is a new toy, the sensory bin, maybe an experiment. Sometimes our Madison librarian Sean will zoom in and do a science experiment with our kiddos. And then sometimes we even walk to a different place with our binoculars. In preschool, our teachers help us learn to talk to everybody. That is probably one of the greatest skills that they learn in preschool. They learn how to interact with other children, how to interact with adults. Our speech pathologist plays games with the children, sometimes puts on puppet plays. An occupational therapist visits the whole class and helps them write letters better, or maybe gives them new things to make with scissors and glue. The teachers are now using Hegarty, which we're using as we've learned through some of our grant programs. A phonemic awareness program, which we're now using it pre-K through three, all, all the way in our elementary schools. And this helps our children learn how sounds work in words and tap out syllables. We usually have a theme every month and we get to learn about cities, farms, health, our neighborhoods and families. Map man is a favorite. And snack time is a great time to share with our friends and try new snacks. We always take a bite first before saying we don't like it, which is very helpful to parents because suddenly kids are eating things they never ate before, right? We have large group where we learn our math and lots of concepts and small group. Where they practice skills and listen to stories or sing songs every day. And at the end of the day, they clean up their things, put on their coats and boots, their own coats and their own boots. And they line up, they wait for a number, their number to be called and one of the assistants takes them to the car. They're ready to go, they're ready for kindergarten when they're done with preschool, so we're very proud of our preschool and thanks for the opportunity to share that with you.
Thank you, Jovette. Before I introduce our elementary team, I do want to say that our preschool is. Five-star step up to quality preschool and that takes a lot of work on a part, on the part of that team. And then they go to kindergarten and one of the big changes the pandemic has brought to us this year. Because we cannot in the district afford, which is addressing one of the questions in the chat. All-day, everyday kindergarten where every other school in the tri-county area have that opportunity. We do not, but we are doing all-day, everyday kindergarten, two to three times a week. Versus having the two and a half hour day. We did it this year because we wanted to eliminate the. Multiple transitions with COVID nineteen and, and being able to sanitize the room once during the day. But our team has found that it does eliminate some of those transitions that a two and a half hour day really shortened instruction. So. That is a big thing that we do not have that almost every other school around us has. At this time, I'm going to introduce Bill Mayer, Principal of North Elementary School. And he will be followed by Shannon Kriegmott, Principal of South Elementary School.
Good evening, I'm the principal at North Elementary. This is my fifth year at Madison Local Schools, fourth at North, twentieth year in education and I did graduate from Madison in ninety. Ninety-seven, so I'm a proud Madison graduate, fighting for blue streaks. Just a little summary of what we do at North, how we operate, I, I call it the MVP, our mission, vision and principles. Our mission is to provide each student a high-quality education in which they are healthy, safe, feel engaged, supported. Challenged to be contributing members of society. Our vision is to deliver a world-class learning environment that meets the social emotional needs of our young people. Through positive learning environment, learning relationships and culture that promote collaboration, communication, creativity and critical thinking. Our principals, as we call it, are our big five, that's kind of how we operate, that kind of drives our relationship building, like I said. With our staff members, students and community members. Number one of our big five is our safety, safety first, number two is culture and climate, our North Family Team Way. Number three is relationships matter, being that kid connector. Number four is high expectations and rigor, continuous improvement. Always looking to be better than we were, we were the day before. And then number five is communication is the, communication is the key, leave no doubt, making sure we're telling our story. I'm talking about each one of those real quickly, a little bit more detail. With safety, when you drop off your kid in our building, we want to make sure they have a healthy and safe learning environment and they come home to you each and every day. We take safety very seriously, through our use of our SRO, our administration, our administration is very visible as, as is our staff. When they enter and exit our buildings, we have controlled movements through our hallways. This year, it's a little different with the pandemic. And all the safety precautions, we call it the backup, mask up, wash up, our BMW, ensuring that social distancing. Making sure our masks are up at all times, outside of when we're eating or outside. And then obviously. I'm making sure that we are washing our hands thoroughly after use of the restroom before and after eating and obviously coming in from the playground. We ensure our safety through our safety drills, as usual, we all have to comply and execute those safety drills each and every month. Whether they're lockdown drills, fire drills, rapid dismissal drills, tornado drills. So we want to make sure we're, we're executing those and our perimeter checks, our SRO does a great job of making sure our building's safe at all times. Culture and climate, our North Family Team Way, we call it the Triangle Trust. In which we get our parents very involved in our school at North. And the same thing with our community, community members, we can't do it without them, our success story is because of them. Obviously, along with our staff and how hard they work. Some of the things, the positive recognition, the student recognition that we've tried to been doing for the last five years. In Madison is our streak of the month program, we have a wall of fame where each teacher chooses a student of the year. They get to go to Pizza Roto in a limo and some of those nice little rewards at the end of the year. We have a two-twelve bulletin board for exceptional work, we have our E plus R equals well board for behavior. We have a kindness badge, a wall with the I in kind, so we're trying to really promote that PBIS, the K in our street behaviors. We have streak out postcards that we send to our, not only to our staff and students, but also our parents that are very involved in our students' education. And then we have our coffee bean staff cards as well. And like I said, all this cannot happen if we don't have that great community partnerships and everybody being on board. Helping out in our schools. Relationships matter, being that kid connector, like I said, we really push relationships, we know that our kids are coming to us with a lot of different baggage, a lot of different. Things going on in their lives, a lot of them have aces, which is adverse childhood experiences. Our, our staff has been trained in trauma-informed care from SST four, we're currently going through training for it to be a trauma-informed, sensitive school as all our buildings are. We really push the social emotional check-ins and that's, that's one of our gems program. The whole child initiative of healthy, safe, engaged, supported and challenged. We have closed closets, we do a Santa streak over the holiday break as some of the other buildings do as well, making sure our most needy kids get those extra things. So they have something under the Christmas tree. And then also our backpack program, we partner with N sixty hours hunger, Mr. Bulls acquired that. Partnership and we've run, we've run with it, our, a lot of our support staff in all the buildings, our SROs. Go and pick that up out in Haynesville and bring it to us and then we make sure our neediest kids and families get fed over the, over the weekends. And then we, we, we did that all summer long as well, so that was really, really exciting to see and I know a lot of families were appreciative of that. Number four is high expectations and rigor, that continuous improvement, things that we've tried to do to save money and get creative. With trying to bring more into the building with less money, like as our treasurer and our superintendent assistant superintendent mentioned, is our P for L grant. We partner with Ohio State University and we got funds from them. To try to make sure we get more literacy and social emotional learning and curriculum into our school for our kids. Our letters grant, that was already been mentioned, that all our teachers were trained, three years of training on that. A lot of great professional development for phonemic awareness, phonics, fluency, vocabulary, comprehension. Teacher look forwards at North, we try to sharpen the sword and make our sure our best practices are always trying to get better and do things differently each and every year. PBIS training, which Ms. Kriegmott heads that up, she'll be talking about that further, we, we participate in that, just like all the other buildings. And I think this year, as much as anybody, I would like to give a shout out to the high school, they are absolutely rocking PBIS this, this year. As all the buildings are, but we're really pushing PBIS this year. And then our literacy training through SST for our support staff as well, we want to make sure our instructional aides are getting that same. Professional development as well. And last but not least, number five is communication is the key. I've always been told to tell your story, make sure it's out there on social media, you want, you want the community involved, you want the parents involved. You want to, you want to make sure they know what's going on in your building, so we have our PTO page, which does exceptional. I love reading all the comments and the positive buzz and the communication between parents, staff members answering each other's questions and so forth. We have all our staff members use Remind, the Remind app, we have a Twitter page, we have a principal's Facebook page. We do a North News, quarterly newsletter. And we do a distribution email blast as well, so we try to make sure everybody is in the. And we do a distribution email blast as well. So we try to make sure everybody is in the know and we answer any and all questions um, when asked. So that's a little bit about North.
Shannon, you're up.
Okay. Hi, everybody. I'm Shannon Kriegma. Um, I feel like half the people, at least half the people here probably know me. Um, I feel like I know almost everyone in Madison at this point because like Bill, I'm a hometown girl. He's a hometown boy. Um, I graduated from Madison High School. I went all the way through Madison schools. My husband did as well. My mom was a teacher in the district in Mike Vacarello's room right there. And uh, my children both graduated from Madison High School very recently. So I will do my best to keep it short, although I could talk about this district from just about every perspective. I taught here before I was a principal here as well. So, um, hi. I love this place. I'm so proud to be a principal in this district. But um, like Mr. Bull said, we do a lot with shoestrings and duct tape and you know, MacGyver and things together to make things work for kids. And um, that's getting a little bit harder to do as the world becomes more global, more competitive, more technological. So, um, you know, I hope that the community will continue to just see the, the effort that we make and also the need for funds that we have. So just a little bit about South Elementary. Um, my goal as principal, and I know that my assistant principal, Seth Hartman, who's here as well, um, has the same philosophy is that we really want the school to be a place that kids love to come to every day. We want this to be a super positive memory-making experience for them. And we want the adults in the building to feel the same way. So, um, like Mr. Mayor was saying, a big part of this for us is built around our PBIS planning. And PBIS technically stands for Positive Behavioral Interventions and Supports. But for the kids, it basically means streak behaviors and streak bucks and reinforcements, which they probably would call prizes. And it helps us use consistent common language with everyone in our building. So the teachers are talking to kids about behaviors using consistent language. We're teaching kids how we want them to behave in school and what's expected of them as little citizens here at South Elementary. So that it's a predictable environment for them. It's a safe environment for them. And that's what our PBIS program is built on, these five key behavioral expectations from kindergarten through twelfth grade. And at preschool, they've chosen three to focus on with their little ones. So the streak behaviors, which maybe you've heard about, hopefully you've heard about if you're a parent in the district, are safety, teamwork, responsibility, effort and kindness. Get it? Streak, those are our streak behaviors. So that's what we spend a lot of time on. We start with our streak pledge every morning to remind the kids of those keywords and we look for ways to reinforce them throughout the day. We use streak bucks at South. And the kids can earn little prizes, little rewards, little reinforcements, anything from telling a joke on the announcements to sitting in the rolly chair to getting maybe a jelly bar donated by one of our fabulous community partners. And they might even end up streak of the week if they're demonstrating these behaviors on a regular basis. And then we have lots of community partners that help support that as well, which is fabulous. And then as they go to the middle school, they're going to know these are the behaviors that are expected and we're going to ramp up what we expect of you. But they're all built around this common language that we have. And like Mr. Mayor said, it carries right on through up to the high school as well. And they've been doing a lot of cool, community building activities in their school with streak behaviors this year. So that's a district-wide initiative. Every school has a team that puts together all of this hard work and plans all of these things. These are all staff members that volunteer extra time to make this happen for their students. So it's, it is a requirement of the state of Ohio that all state, all schools participate in some PBIS initiatives. But the work that is done in this district, it is all done by volunteers beyond the school day. Because the staff here, not just the teachers, they buy into it. They want to do this for their kids. So we're building this environment where kids are not just learning academic subjects, but we're helping them learn how to behave and we're helping them learn how to interact with each other, just like Jovette said, they do at the preschool as well. So that's a big part of South is PBIS and part of it, I'll admit, is because I'm the district PBIS coach as well. So I'm very passionate about this. And if you want to talk to me about it for like three hours later on, I'd be happy to do that. But moving right along, another thing that we're really big on at South is um, fun. Elementary school should be a fun place, right? Don't you have great memories of elementary school? I do. We had chickens. We had colonial day where I had to walk around Red Bird with my lunch in a tin pail, but for some reason my mother had it home. And you know, wear my coat all day like it was freezing cold in Mrs. Dubsky's room. But you should be making these memories while you're learning at elementary school and that's what we aim to do. So we have easy peasy theme days, like I don't know when St. Patrick's Day became so big for kids, but they love it. So we go with it. The kindergartners go on a leprechaun hunt. The teachers wear their silly green shirts and you know, headbands with shamacks on them. And it's fun. And we want the kids to see that we can have fun while we learn and we can be silly together. And we can still be respectful of each other, right? We have to find a way to do this with kids. We want them to be making these memories together. Um, some of this stuff was a little harder this year with COVID. You know, we like to have huge family nights with hundreds of people and wagon rides and football players reading to their kids and jack-o'-lantern carving and snacks and obstacle courses. And we couldn't really do that this year. But our staff put together a fantastic drive-through literacy night where they made book displays and dressed up and brought their families and their dogs and even their horses and even their fire-throwing friends. And our families drove through safely and got to celebrate books and each other. So that's what we aim to do at South. We try to make it a great place to learn and a great place to make memories because you know, the end game of all of this is it is the learning. We want them to come out of here knowing what they need to know to be successful at middle school and beyond, right? We want them to learn to be strong readers and good problem solvers and excellent writers. We want them to succeed academically. That's the end game. And that's the stuff that's hard to do with duct tape and string and good hearts and teamwork and kindness alone. We need money for that. We need our buildings to be fully staffed. We need teachers. We need aides. We need administrators. We need nurses. We need custodians to keep us clean and safe. We need technology. We need books that are less than twenty years old. We need stuff to do our jobs to the best of our ability. So you know, we'll keep trying the best we can with what we've got, but we could do even better with a little bit more. So that's South and that's me and that's school. Thanks. And Seth, say hi. I'm mute for a second, so nice to you. Thanks.
Hello.
Thank you. Uh, next up is Tom Brady, but I do want to address a uh, a question that is kind of tied in. Administrative employees cuts. We are a very small administrative team to begin with, but at central office, because I've been here so long. Um, I can tell you that we used to have a full-time curriculum director. That position was eliminated in two thousand and eleven and became combined with the assistant superintendent position. Um, most districts uh, in their pupil services department that have over four hundred students with identified needs also have a supervisor. We have one uh, special ed expert in the district. So again, we do, do a lot and ask a lot of our entire team. Mr. Brady, talk to us about the middle school.
Hello, everybody. Uh, my name's Tom Brady. I've been with the district now for nineteen years. Uh, five years at Madison High School as an assistant principal with Mr. Fisher. Uh, currently I'm Mr. Harold, my assistant principal and PBIS uh, director here at the middle school. Um, just like Shannon and Mr. Mayor said, uh, we do PBIS here as well. Um, and we do it with, you know, shoestrings and bubble gum, like Shannon said. Um, we try and create a positive environment, um, but that positive environment is harder and harder to create when we're losing staff um, at the rate that we're losing. Um, and I'm just going to sort of echo what a school day is in a, in a, you know, a, a student's day at Madison Middle School. Um, if they are not in band or choir, they have the four cores of uh, school, uh, math, social studies, language arts and science. Um, and then they have, you know, a rotation of specials. Uh, I only have four specials, art, PE, health and uh, technology. The technology course was added three or four years ago now and added that teacher in that program. Um, that was the, that's the only teacher we've added in the last probably eleven years that I've been here um, to the middle school. Uh, so if they have those and they're not in band or choir and they're not in eighth grade, they have two study halls plus five classes. Um, and trying to keep students engaged with that number of study halls, uh, trying to have uh, teachers help them, guide them, create a positive environment with the large study halls that we have, um, and the large class sizes that we have is difficult. Uh, but our teachers have done an outstanding job. Uh, they've risen to the occasion with the numerous cuts that the middle school hasn't had to undertake the last like ten years. Um, so just to give you a sort of a background on how the middle school has sort of sacrificed and helped the district save money. And Mrs. Smith has alluded to this uh, previously. We've lost six language arts teachers in the last ten years, a gifted language arts teacher, uh, one gateway science teacher and the program, one PE and health teacher, two Spanish ESL teachers and that program, one choir teacher, one band teacher, one title reading teacher, one guidance counselor and the advisory program that I put in three years ago. So that's fifteen teachers that we've lost and three programs. That's, that was a third of our staff. So I'm really, I'm really doing a really decent job of trying to cover and put these kids in a position where they're engaged in the curriculum that we have to offer them. And like Ms. Kriegma said, you know, we need curriculum, we need new materials, we need resources. And we need teachers to make that connection. The middle school is a truly a bridge from elementary school to the high school. And we believe that, you know, I believe in the, the middle school concept of education. And we need compassionate teachers in this building and we need more of them to reach all of our students. Um, you know, and to overcome the achievement gaps, the opportunity gaps, the technology gaps that we're facing in this district. But like I said, and like everybody else has said, come, you know, before me, our teachers have done a fantastic job. Um, I'm very proud of the staff that I, I do have, but we do need more resources and we, we, we need more good people. Um, so that's really, you know, sort of a, a look into the middle school. Um, like I said, we have an outstanding teaching crew and uh, we're looking forward to hopefully, you know, passing eleven, moving forward and you know, getting some more programs to engage these kids when they come to school. And to reach out through, you know, the advisory program, the social emotional uh, classes that we've offered in the past. Um, getting them engaged in, you know, STEM technology, computers, so on and so forth. So uh, thank you for this opportunity to share, you know, sort of a little light into the middle school. And uh, hopefully, you know, your support as well, come May. Thank you.
And now, without further ado, may I uh, introduce our senior member of our administrative team. And I was lucky to work for him when I started in this district, our high school principal, Mr. Bill Fisher.
Hi, everybody. Um, I'm sure you're getting uh, tired of listening to all this. So just a couple of quick introductions and I just want to leave you with a, a one thought. Um, first of all, um, Jack Whaley, my assistant's been with me. I don't know if Jack's still on. Jack, I think seven years now. Jack's a graduate of Madison, uh, graduated a couple of years before Bill Mayer. Uh, Bill, thank you for the shout out to the high school, but you did forget to mention who your favorite principal was. Uh, fortunate, this is my twenty-fifth year as principal. So there must be some reasons why I stayed so long. I also want to um, thank Doug Baker who jumped on board this year. Doug's a longtime administrator from the Mennard District and Montana, I should mention, and he replaced Jen Grimes who moved in the board office. So my thought is this, I would leave with you, rather than to go through the nuts and bolts, reiterate, you know, a lot of things that have been mentioned about our needs. Um, just, I just challenge you to put yourself, and a lot of you, you're closer to your high school years than you are your elementary years, obviously. But think back to when you were in high school and what, what your life was like as a high school student. Like the other administrators, I have one of the best jobs in the world. Uh, why do I stay? I get to live in the life of a high school kid every day. Sometimes it's good. Um, sometimes it's very challenging, obviously. But you know, from their perspective as young adults, um, I challenge you to think about, remember the days when you were in high school. My philosophy has always been, I want kids to like their high school experience. I want them to have a positive experience like everybody else. Our goal is to develop, I always say, well-rounded individuals. Um, students who, you know, discover what their passions are, discover their talents, discover um, you know, what drives them, what their careers might be, um, you know, to help prepare them, you know, when they leave here. And a chart of all the charts that Mike, you know, remember that as a high school kid, if you think of when you were in high school, you, you don't, you don't give two hoots about the funding and all that. Um, you know, you're living in an adult world. And those kids that come to school every day, what's most important is their life, their experiences, positive, negative, you know, what high school is all about. And I think the most the hardest thing for me has been this recent COVID challenge because we had seniors last year that didn't get to experience the many things that we experienced as high school students. So the, the situation, you know, that we put these kids in, how it impacts what we're trying to do to help prepare them. I go back, if you look at that chart, there's some of the charts that Mike Vacarello put up and he listed all the school districts across the board. I always think about how we're trying to get our kids ready. They have to go out and compete against those kids. Uh, our kids don't leave high school and suddenly everything's there. All those kids from those other schools, those are the kids they're going to compete with. So you know, I just challenge you to remember what in high school, as you're trying to find yourself, how important decisions, the things that we're doing as adults impact those kids. And the only reference I'll make to cuts is this most recent one. Last year we lost four teachers. Um, science and English, one in each of those areas, the foreign language and the PE. Well, how does that impact our kids? Well, the less teachers we've lost, more and more over the eight to ten years, we've basically cut somebody in every area. But we've lost so many electors, so many opportunities, so many programs that have been reduced that a lot of kids aren't getting to get those experiences and that concerns me. And my daughters went to school here. It's been a few years, two thousand and one, two thousand and four. But I'm thankful that they had a lot of opportunities. And when I look back, it wasn't that they were great athletes and they got to play in college. It wasn't, you know, their band experience, you know, the clubs that we're in, et cetera, et cetera. But all of that impacted and what molded them to become the people they are today. And I didn't realize that so much going through it, but when you go back and you think about those of you that have, have had kids go through school, you know, the experiences they have in schools, the failures and successes over and over, that's what makes them, turns them into you know, successful citizens, adults, et cetera. So I just challenge you to remember what it was like in So I just challenge you to remember what it was like in, when you were in high school. So when we make decisions, we're impacting these kids. And, you know, I would like to see, I've, I've fortune, I've been here, I've seen a lot of things change. I'd like to get some of that back. I think it has impacted kids. I think it's given them fewer opportunities to experience these things. You know, the one example would be, we don't have drama classes this year. Well, when kids come to school here, we have all kinds of kids, the whole range. They all find their niche, whether they're in band, they're in sports, they're in drama, they're, you know, clubs. You know, if they're in ecology, whatever it is, they have to find their niche. And, you know, I just challenge you to remember that. So Angela, with that, I don't want to take any more time. It's been a long evening.
Thank you, Mr. Fisher. I'll conclude the administrative remarks and then turn it back over to Sean to moderate the Q and A. But I think, you know, education has continued to change and this year it's changed in a big way. The demands are greater as we prepare students for our more global competition. We have to prepare students for careers that have yet to be created. And we need to teach students how to be consumers of information and not just digest it. To do that, we need to maintain the programs and the learning opportunities that we have. Locally, it's up to us to determine what type of schools we want. Our strategic plan guides us, but ultimately we need the resources to maintain current educational opportunities. You've heard tonight all the good things we do in our schools, but you've also just heard our financial reality. We need your support to provide quality education that we've had in this district for years and want to continue for years to come. So now I turn it back over to Sean Douglas and he will moderate our Q and A portion this evening.
All right, I was going to point out a few things before I go to the Q and A. I just want to talk about, you know, we've reduced in this district 40, more than 40 teachers. More than 40 non-teaching positions over the last 15 years. We've been flat funded. We're operating off of the revenue that we received in 2008. So imagine that in your own home. You're getting the same wages you had in 2008, but inflation has gone up 24%. That's why, one of the questions on here, and I'm going to let our treasurer address this additionally, but. Most districts are back on the ballot every three to four years asking for additional money because the state doesn't send you any more money. They, they flat fund you, but your costs go up. Everything goes up. And that's why, so one of the questions on here, I think it was Dave Dibble asked. Why, why is it that you're back, why is it a property tax? Why are you back on here all the time? Well, we've only passed one new levy in 30 years. Most districts are back asking for new money every three to four years. So I just wanted to point that out. I also want to point out that the, there, there's one thing that our district has prioritized. And we've said, we're going to pay for it even if it costs a little more than other districts. And that's our school resource officers. We have a school resource officer in every elementary school building, the middle school and the high school. Every day, there's backup, if, if somebody has vacation time or sick time or whatever that might be, those folks are there. That's for the safety of our students. So that's something that our district has said, we're just going to pay for. And not every district has that. So that's something I'm supportive of. The last time we had this contract up, I think it was in January, was a unanimous vote from our school board. So I'll start with these questions. If you require assistance with interpretation of federal regulations, I can assist. So I want to point out that we don't make these decisions in an island here in Madison. We're part of associations, we're part of the Ohio School Board Association. There's a superintendent's association and there is a treasurer's association. They may not be exactly those names, but those folks have associations with attorneys and folks who are experts in these areas. So we haven't misinterpreted any federal regulations. We don't do that. It's not just me sitting around or, or our treasurer superintendent making those decisions. We've had associations with experts who give us advice and so we go from there.
Sean, on that one, we also have the Ohio Department of Education that sets the rules. And they are pretty clear on what we can spend and what, what we can spend money on and what we can't spend money on. And the penalty for spending it in the wrong area is you give it back to the state.
Okay. So the next question was from Dave, hi Dave, Dave Dibble. So I'm going to read it. So are none of the items identified in the money from the federal government included as needs in the levy request? If so, you want to address that, Mike, that first part?
Yeah, give me one second. Go over with Dave, maybe you can share his. Oh, hey Dave, open up your door, Angela's computer died. So the question is, can you read it again? I'm sorry, I was.
Sure. The question is, so are none of the items identified in the money from the federal government included as needs in the levy request?
Okay, so the first thing, the levy request isn't to add any bodies. All of, all the short staff that, that we're talking about, none of that gets solved with this levy. This is, as we call it, to protect the district, it's to preserve the district, it's to keep the minimal stuff that we currently have. And typically with, with federal money, except for that stuff that we got in, in May and April of 2020. You have to spend it on brand new expenditures. You can't just offset wages, you can't just offset benefits. You have to go and put in programs for remediation, you need to go and put in programs that support the learning of the student. And because it's a one-time infusion of money, we have to be very careful that anything we implement with that funding. Once the funding goes away, the program has to go away too. For example, we can't start all-day kindergarten with a one-time infusion of money. Because we know, once it's spent, it's gone and then the general fund will have to pick up, pick up the rest. So Dave, can you, or where's Dave? Dave, can you give me a thumbs up if that answered your question? We're, we're not going to be able to hear you, but just the thumbs up. If you have another, oh, kind of, okay. Again, basically the levy isn't going to fund anything additional, that grant will. Not grant, the stimulus money will. But the uses of that stimulus money are defined and limited, so.
All right. So Dave, if that didn't answer your question, I would encourage you to contact Mike, you know, in the coming days. And he could hopefully address any specific questions you have as a follow-up. So the next question is, what is our student-teacher ratio? Angela, I thought, I thought you addressed some of that.
Well, I don't have student-teacher ratio. And I looked on the information that we get provided by the state and they give us 61 different ratios and student-teacher ratio is not one of them. I, I don't know why. So as I sit here, I can't comment whether, what ours is, whether we're higher or lower than, than other districts.
Is that something you can, is Angela on the call or did she lose her connection?
Hang on Angela. All right, try now, unmute yourself.
Okay. So it, it depends at each level. I can address how we staff in this district. So we have contact contractual class size limits. And our class sizes can only go to a certain number. And then after that, there are things called overages. But many of our classes at the high school, because of the number of reductions we've made. Are at that one to 28, sometimes 30 students in a class to one teacher. So we are at the higher end of our class size limits as a district. And at the elementary, I do know, because I do that staffing and my administrators, they, they laugh at me. But we look at a number plus or minus five when we're staffing at elementary. As to how many sections in a classroom we'll have at a grade level. So we staff pretty tight, like I said. On normal years, it's 25 K to three with the possibility of 27 in a classroom. And we've done that. At four to, three to five, it's 26 and then up to 28, depending upon where our bigger class sizes are.
All right. Next question was, why do we have, why is this meeting virtual instead of in person? We're doing this one virtual. We hope to do a second town hall in the coming weeks in person. And we've had an offer to have that at a specific location. And as long as we don't have backward progression on the pandemic, we do plan to do that in person. I will add that our board meetings and many other meetings that we've had, we've had significantly improved attendance. Since we started offering these virtually. So that, I'll answer that question. Why a permanent levy instead of a short-term levy, bridge until the state funding opens up? Well, we've been waiting for the state funding to open up for about a decade and it hasn't done that. In the event we did get some additional revenue from the state, we might actually be able to have more cash reserves than two days. I've often said that if our treasurer retired today, we would have difficulty recruiting another who would be willing to come to a district. Where we have two days of cash on hand. An average nonprofit or governmental organization is expected to have a minimum of 30 days of cash on hand. And normally 90 days. We have two days. And so if we did finally get some additional revenue, we might be able to actually not have our treasurer. Biting his nails at the end of the fiscal year every year. And we might actually be able to start providing some services to our students that we're unable to provide now that many, many other districts are able to provide. So that's my answer to that. Why is school funding property taxes as opposed to income tax or sales tax? I don't believe we have the ability legally to levy a sales tax. Mike, can you confirm that?
Yeah, the only type of sale or sales tax we can levy, if we can get the county commissioners to free up any remaining sales tax that they're allowed to levy. Is for permanent improvements. And that would be countywide and I think Medina has one or had one. But sales tax are not allowed to be used for operations of school districts.
All right. What resources do surrounding communities have that we do not, with the obvious exception of Perry? I will always support our schools, but what are we doing, what are they doing that we're not? So Mike.
Can I jump in? I wanted to kind of help answer that question, help you along with it, just because I'm in the trenches. For those of you who haven't officially been, well, Angela introduced me, I'm Jen Katniss Grimes. I am a citizen here in Madison. And I am the Student Service Director, which deals with special education and other services. So to answer, also, I think you missed the Citizens for Smart Education, I think it is. That also kind of ties into resources. That one question was, is in higher academia, all-tenured teachers should be required to acquire grants. And Dave Dibble to kind of talk to you about the resources that we have or that other communities do. Just off of the top of my head, we've acquired at least three or four grants within the last year. We are pretty proud to have received a grant for our social emotional learning. And we have a, a team right now that has worked for trauma-informed schools. That was a grant that we are a part of in Lake County. And as both the elementary and middle school teachers mentioned, we have had training. In fact, we were honored because Madison Local Schools was the most committed so far to that effort. So that was one grant. Another grant that we also received was a few years ago and Mr. Bull could. That is something that, that Mr. Bull has worked on. We had a grant where we did a lot of curriculum aligning. And that helped us, you know, kind of get our, streamline our resources and purchase some. Programs that were specially utilized in our middle school and also in our ninth grade. Another grant that we just got was for our CBI program, which is a career-based intervention program. Our fabulous teacher that we work with was able to secure a grant to do some things over the summer. We also, so those grants that I just mentioned, a lot of those come from our state support team. And they give us, you know, the heads up that something's out there. And so then we kind of work with them and they guide us. So we do go for grants, but we need help with getting those resources and those things in. Our teachers, we were just, Mr. Pira is a fabulous. He does our ecology program. He was just awarded, you know, a very special, you know, for fantastic, outstanding teaching and instruction. He's also gotten grants, many grants in the, the few years that he's been here. And we also really work, as all of the other administrators have mentioned, with our community partners. And so a lot of those partnerships offset some of the costs that we have. Also the partnerships that we have that work, you know, with our, the programs. Within and sponsor the schools like our robotics and that. So I would just say that, you know, we really are working. And as far as comparing it to higher academia. There is contractual obligations that we have for teaching and public education. So you can't really compare, you know, what the expectations are for higher academia. But our teachers do go above and beyond. There was also, two years ago, I believe in the middle school, the science teachers were recognized and all of those come with some money. So we really have, you know, we do work and we do receive funding and we really do rely on our community partners. One final thing, I came from Lejman, I was a high school principal there, I taught there. And then I was an athletic director and then that position became combined, I was like two or three things. So I'm very familiar with, you know, levy support and lack of it. And I moved to Madison and I believe in, you know, the, the community and the people that I live and work with. So I, I really appreciate, you know, your taking the time to listen to us today. Thanks.
So to go further with the answer on that question, I can talk about my time at Riverside, which was 10 years prior to here. And some things may have changed, but some of the things that, that they had that we don't have is they had either two or three subject level coordinators. They had a math coordinator, an English coordinator, and I think a science coordinator. So their sole focus was to. Was to enhance those subjects being taught within the districts. I just found out they don't have the fourth and fifth grade gifted only classes. They have a PR person, you know, that helps get your good news out there if you have somebody dedicated to that 40 hours a week. They have two basically special ed directors, we have, we have Jen. They had an assistant treasurer, I don't have one here. So they've just got more layers of people to support the educational process than we ever had here in Madison. I think when we got here, what did we, what do we teach Angela? Spanish and German?
Right. Russian. Yeah, I talked about all of those things.
Yeah, I mean, so.
No longer there.
There's, there's other districts that offer multiple foreign languages. There's other districts that up, offer multiple sports that we don't. You know, and, and if you're a big football fan, you realize we're the only ones in Lake County without a turf. This levy will not be used for turf. But that's just another example of what our students are lacking that other districts may have. We have no, no intentions of using any money for turf in the near future ever. Until we find somebody wants to pay for it. So, and I mentioned turf as, as a comparison. And by the way, Sean, you talk about flat funding, I think I'd be happy if we were flat funded. You know, we, we've gone down $2 million. That's not, that's not flat, so. Okay.
All right. The last question I see here on the chat is if the levy does not pass, where will cuts be made? Board has not made that decision. We know the dollar figure will have to cut in the event that the levy doesn't pass. The board would have another option. To try to run a levy again in November, I'm not saying we would, that, that would have to be a vote from the Board of Education. After consideration, depending on what happens May 4th. And if then the levy didn't pass, we have a dollar figure that we have to cut from the budget in order to balance it. We cannot have a negative balance. We, you know, that's just the way it is. So we have not made those decisions. That's why we're offering the community the opportunity to vote on this levy. We're already an impoverished district. If you look at those numbers. Being in the bottom, I think, 5% of funded districts in the state of Ohio. And, and I always say this, if you want to figure out how much our school district has, it's, the, the, the only thing simple about school finance is this. Your, your per pupil revenue. You add up every dollar you get, it doesn't matter where it comes from, federal government, state government, local property tax levies, add it all up, divided by your number of students. divided by your number of students, that's your, your per pupil revenue. And we're in the bottom five to seven percent in the state. And that's not what I want for my community, you know. My youngest son is a junior and he's gonna graduate next year. This money is, he's not gonna see this, this money if the levy passes for the most part. He's gonna graduate and these, you know, I, I'm trying to worry about and fund the students who are going to be our future. And so that's why, you know, I hope you come out and vote. And, you know, I would encourage you to support your schools, but, you know, everyone has to make their decision on their vote and I understand that. But, you know, oftentimes in our community, we talk about doing the bare minimum. We're already doing that. That's not what I want for my school district. That's not what I want, you know, and I, you think about your property tax values. I mean, all of those things are related. You know, you have to, you know, strong schools is a strong community. So I would just encourage everybody to get out and vote however you decide. That's up to you. So I think with that, I don't see any other.
Sean.
Oh, I do.
We have the one email question that we received.
Yes, go ahead.
You want me to read it?
Okay, sure.
Oh, okay. So somebody submitted, what adjustments have been made related to annual personnel cost besides reduction in the overall number of staff in the past couple of years? Have raises been held or salary cuts implemented with administration or staff? I think we addressed that, that, you know, over the last eleven years, we're at about half the rate of inflation. Nobody's taken a, a pay cut, but just year after year, we, we get zero increase. Have there been any increases in the amount of money that staff faculty pays for health insurance? Yes, there has. In the last contract, both, everybody in the district saw an increase in their employee contribution ranging from twenty-four to thirty percent, depending on what you group where you were in. If you had a thirty percent the first year, it was held the next year and the other group got a ten percent. So right now, our employees are paying about sixteen percent of the premium cost. We did make a benefit change to where the most expensive insurance plan was phased out. So that in itself was a cost savings for the district, save the employees on their employee contribution. But it was an expensive plan that was no longer sustainable in, in a school district like ours or frankly, any in the consortium. And then I realized faculty are under contract and that negotiations only occur when contracts renew. That is correct. But when you have no money to negotiate, it's very hard to give anything or get anything. So, you know, as we can't sign multiple-year agreements, we can't, from the management side, make steps, you know, forwards into more cost sharing of, of the benefits. Nor can the employees get a increase on the base or a significant increase on the base. And then finally, I think this one's for Angela. Has any consideration been given to a four-day school week in an effort to reduce transportation slash utility costs and use as a recruitment tool when hiring?
Part of it is, as we've seen through this pandemic, is that school is, especially at the elementary level, much needed five days a week. It, society doesn't operate on a four-day-a-week basis. But also the savings is negligible because we would still have to have transportation force programs out of district that aren't on a four-day-a-week program scheduling. And there would have to be negotiations of changing terms and conditions of employment. So while it's something that has been talked about, the feasibility of it in the near future is not something that's being looked at at this time. There is one question in the chat. Why don't we start a program to get high school students and teachers involved in quality improvement, finance and cost saves to learn about finance, taxes and economics? We do have a class at the high school, personal financial literacy that is a requirement through the Ohio Department of Education where students learn about all these different things. Budgeting, taxes, the personal economics and the impact of what you do with your life as to what you can afford in life. And they talk about things such as taxes and, and those things as well. I think we've addressed that. If the levy passes, would we be able to bring back programs that have been cut? Or would this funding just be daily operating costs? Right now, this is a levy to maintain what we currently have. You know, as we said, there's, you know, still some big variables out there with the state budget. But right now, this levy is truly to bring back or to maintain what we currently have.
All right. I think we have one last question here. I'm gonna try to paraphrase this here, or, or at least. This person said, it would seem like we would have line items identified that we need to pay for. And it would seem like the line items that are paid for by the stimulus money would in reality be items we're trying to pay for through the levy. The stimulus pays for X, Y and Z. X, Y and Z were not identified as items. I guess you could say on the chopping block. It seems like that stimulus money should have a positive impact on our bottom line. No matter how much we're asking for. So that's the general question out of the comment that I received. Mike, could you talk about that?
And I think we addressed that a little bit. The stimulus money, as Sean has talked about, has to be for new programs. Since we don't have those programs currently in our budget, the programs that we have to offer are in addition to what we're already offering and would be paid for by the stimulus money. So this won't, we can't replace any current expenses with the stimulus money because the, 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 the rules are gonna be, you gotta spend it on new programs. So I hope that answers that question.
New programs or things to make the buildings COVID-safe?
Right.
All right, all right. So we said we would try to wrap up by eight-thirty. It's almost eight-forty-five, so we'll end for this night. This is not your only opportunity to ask questions. My email is sean.douglas, S-H-A-W-N dot douglas, D-O-U-G-L-A-S, at madisonschools.net. Send me any questions we didn't answer. And also contact our treasurer and our superintendent through the board office. And we'll do our best to answer questions. We hope, as I said, to have an in-person town hall in the next couple of weeks or so. And, you know, we're putting lots of information out there. I know some folks have said, you know, we're not putting information out. We just mailed about four thousand letters out to folks in Madison. We have all sorts of information on social media through our Protect and Reserve page. So we're trying to get the message out. We have five hundred yard signs we've purchased. As soon as they come in, you're gonna start seeing them in your communities. So we're trying to get the message out. This is certainly not what some districts have tried with a stealth campaign where they don't advertise anything. That's something that I've seen on social media. That's not true.
Sean, I want to, you know, just clarify, the levy committee has purchased five hundred signs and did the mailing of four thousand.
Yes. Every, every dollar that is spent to advocate for someone to vote for the levy is paid for through the levy committee, not through the school district. It's illegal to do that. We have not done that. And the levy committee has done it. So, all right. So we will end for this evening. Thank you for attending.